Order this afternoon, please. Good afternoon and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission for Gulf Shores. First item of business is roll call by our Secretary, Mel.
Bob Seiskel?
Here.
Philip Harris?
Here.
Frank Malan?
Here.
Jennifer Guthrie?
Here.
Matt Young?
Here.
Peter Capes?
Alan Young?
Here.
Billy Uday?
Here.
And Dean Long?
Here.
Clearly have a quorum and can continue. First item of actual business is approval of minutes. We have two sets, gentlemen, first being those from the January 26 regularly scheduled meeting. If there aren't any additions or changes, offer a motion for acceptance.
Mother for the approval of the minutes of the January 26, 2021 Planning Commission meeting as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
Abstain on that one, Mel.
Billy? Similarly, are the minutes from the February 8 special meeting, we can have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Was that you, Frank?
Yeah.
We have two public hearings. The first is Phoenix Gulf Shores Roman numeral two condominium and interest in a conditional use permit. In the absence of our director this afternoon, we have the most capable zoning administrator in the county who's going to pinch hit for Lee. Mr. Bauer?
Yes, sir. This is application ZA 21-01, Phoenix Gulf Shores Two Condominium. It's a conditional use permit and site plan approval. The applicant requests conditional use permit and site plan approval for a 24-story, 110-unit condominium with a 24-foot public beach access, which is proposed to be located in the 500 block of East Beach Boulevard. In accordance with Article 10-2B deviations of the zoning ordinance, the applicant seeks to deviate from the strict compliance of the underlying zoning and overlay zoning standards. Therefore, the conditional use permit is required. Again, the site is located in the 500 block of East Beach Boulevard, which is directly on the Gulf of Mexico. The location map on the right shows the site as it's related to the surrounding properties. The site is zoned BT4, which is a high-density tourist business zoning district. This aerial view of the site, which is marked with a red star, shows the site in relationship to the surrounding developments. Again, it's on the Gulf side of Beach Boulevard. Majority of the developments in this area are high-density, high-rise condominiums. So you see directly to the east would be, it's a very small building, which is our point of view, directly to the west is colonnades. And then you also see some of the surrounding condominium units in this location of the Again, this application is seeking concurrent site plan and CUP approval. Some of the details of the site plan, the proposed condominium is 24 stories tall. It'll have 110 units, 66 three-bedroom units and 44 two-bedroom units. It'll feature amenities such as indoor and outdoor pools, hot tub, a fitness room, a lazy river and slides. Some of the details of the conditional use permit requirements. Again, Article 10-2B deviations of the zoning ordinance allows deviations from the zoning and overlay zoning standards if such deviations are found to comply with the goals and intent of the future land use plan. The applicant requests two deviations from the underlying zoning standards and overlay zoning standards. First deviation is they seek to reduce the west side yard setback from 35 feet 10 inches to 24 feet 2 inches. And the second deviation that is requested is an additional habitable story of residential units above what is permitted through the beach area overlay district bonus program. And again, these deviations are only allowed in overlay districts. And again, this development is in the beach area overlay district. Proposed site plan is shown on the right. East Beach Boulevard is located to the top of the page, is barely visible. A parking deck is out in front of the proposed condominium building. And you have the building located more in the center of the site and the pool area and amenity area south, on the south portion of the site abutting the Gulf of Mexico. Some of the details of the site plan, the building height, they propose 22 habitable stories and a total of 24 stories. The zoning allowance for the BT4 district is 20 habitable stories. And with the bonus that is bonus allowed in the beach area overlay district, you can achieve 21 habitable stories. It's worth noting that there is no maximum building height, so the 21 habitable stories can be placed over an unlimited amount of parking deck, amenity areas and lobbies. The number of units proposed is 110 units. The zoning of this property allows 133 units. And with the beach area bonuses that are available, they could achieve a total of 141 units. So the applicant is not requesting to maximize the density of this property. Same with dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing 34.6 dwelling units per acre. BT4 allows 42 dwelling units per acre. And the beach area bonus allows 44 dwelling units per acre. Building coverage proposed is 26% of the site. The zoning ordinance allows a building to cover 65% of the site. Impervious coverage proposed is 42% of the site. The zoning ordinance allows a site to be covered with 85% impervious coverage. The landscaped area proposed is 58% of the site. And the zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 20% of the site to be landscaped. Floor area ratio proposed is 162% of the site, or floor area ratio of 162%. The BT4 zoning district allows 200% floor area ratio. And then the beach area allows a bonus of 200% plus 12,800 square feet of floor area. Setbacks required, or the proposed setback off the front is 10 feet. The zoning ordinance allows a zero-foot front yard setback. East side yard setback proposed is 35 feet 10 inches. The east side yard setback required is 35 feet 10 inches. West side yard setback, as indicated previously, this is a proposed deviation. They request 24 feet 2 inches. The required west side yard setback is 35 feet 10 inches. And then the rear yard setback is the coastal construction control line. That's where the amenity area is proposed to be located. Vehicular parking required is 264 spaces. The development proposes 264 spaces. And then they also propose 11 bicycle parking spaces as required by the zoning ordinance. The building architecture, the building is art deco style, will be again 24 stories. It features stucco exterior and will be painted, I guess, primary color of the building will be gray with gold trim. In this area, the zoning ordinance has additional architectural requirements in the beach area overlay district as well as the walking district overlay district. Buildings have to have a base, a middle and a cap. And they also must incorporate vertical and horizontal modulations into the building. The proposed building complies with those architectural guidelines. It also has a podium, a parking deck, five-story podium parking deck in front of the condominium tower. It contains elements of the overall building such as similar colors and some similar design features. And also, the screening of the parking deck has been provided so that the vehicles will not be visible. Building placement, the building, the primary tower portion of the building is located considerably north of the coastal construction control line, which will preserve the views of the adjacent condominiums to the east and west of the site, which would be our point of view to the east and colonnades to the west. So with this diagram, you can see the turquoise line is the rear building line in relationship to the blue line, which is the coastal construction control line. Analysis of the proposed development, future land use plan compliance. This development complies with the future land use designation of commercial mixed use. The proposal further implements the goals of the future land use plan by providing the public benefit of beach access and pedestrian-oriented amenities. The zoning, the proposed site plan is consistent with the use regulations and the area and dimensional requirements of the BT4 tourist business high-density zoning district and the beach area overlay district, with the exception of those two requested deviations. Plan review, the site proposes one ingress egress driveway to the site from Beach Boulevard. The drive aisle, site circulation, parking space dimensions, number of parking spaces comply with the zoning ordinance regulations. Trash collection, there is a rollout dumpsters are proposed, which will be located underneath the building. And they will be rolled out for the trash collection truck. It complies with the zoning ordinance. We have received a letter from the trash service provider indicating they can adequately serve this site. Landscaping complies with the zoning ordinance. The site provides the required landscaping along Beach Boulevard and along the perimeter, east and west perimeters of the site, as well as a five-foot landscape strip south of the CCL, which is required by the landscape regulations. It's worth noting that there is some beach mouse habitat on this site in portions of the non-buildable area of the project. And these areas will be landscaped with beach mouse vegetation as required by the Fish and Wildlife Department. Exterior lighting plan, they submitted an exterior lighting plan that complies with our lighting and turtle lighting requirements. Traffic studying, there is a traffic study underway by the applicant. And the traffic study will determine what type of off-site improvements are required due to the traffic generated by this project. If you have questions about that, I'll let Mark Ackerman address that after I finish my presentation. Department and agency reviews, the fire marshal has issued a phased approval for this development with a couple of conditions that are included in the recommendation portion of the staff report. And then the engineering department indicates no outstanding review comments or conditions. So go over some of those requested zoning deviations. Again, they request a side yard setback deviation. The west side yard setback, they seek to reduce it from 35 feet 10 inches to 24 feet 2 inches. Compliance with the west side yard setback would require the site, the development portion of the site to be compressed, which would lead to an increased building height due to the placement of additional parking deck under the building and also potentially the placement of additional units on the north side of the building, allowing the site density and intensity to be maximized. So again, they're proposing 110 units. Potentially, if they were to comply with the zoning ordinance, they would seek the 133 units as allowed by our zoning ordinance. Building height deviation, again, they seek to deviate, to obtain 22 habitable stories versus the 21 habitable stories allowed by the bonus density regulations. The zoning ordinance allows habitable stories to be placed over an unlimited number of stories devoted to parking decks, lobbies and vehicular circulation. So although with the bonus 21 habitable stories are all that are allowed, technically you could get five or six or seven levels of parking deck underneath a 21-story building, which would yield a 20, 25 to 27-story building. One of the five categories of bonus height and density allowed the beach area overlay district is the development of a public beach access. Phoenix Two is proposing to dedicate a public access easement and construct a boardwalk and dune walkover along the west side of the property. That will be in the 24-foot 2-inch west side yard setback. This type of bonus or public access qualifies for eight additional units, 12,800 square feet of additional floor area and one habitable story. Phoenix Two is also proposing to dedicate a public easement along the frontage of the development, which will include the construction of approximately 650-square-foot building, which will be for the city's use. Currently, the plans for that small building include a public bathroom facility, a bike, potentially a bike share area and a vending area. That's not, none of those uses are set in stone. It will be decided by the city if we don't like those proposed uses. It's up to the city, whatever we want that building to be used for. The developer has indicated they will build that building and then turn it over to the city for our use, however we see that use, or that building to be used for. So these graphics kind of demonstrate the bullet points that I just discussed. On the left shows the building as requested. As you can see, it's got, majority of the parking deck is in the front of the building. And the units, the 22-story, 22 stories of habitable units place over a lobby and one parking level for the total of 24 stories. So, and then the diagram on the right shows what someone could do pursuant to our zoning ordinance. So you could build five stories of parking deck, lobby areas, and then place 20 stories of habitable units on top of that, which would yield a building height of 25 stories. And then also, in this diagram, it shows units placed on the north side or in front of the tower, which would allow a developer to maximize the density to 133 units and maximize the floor area on this property. This next slide shows the public dedications. Again, there's a 24-foot beach access proposed to be dedicated to public use, to the city public use on the west side of the property. It's developed with a boardwalk and dune walkover and goes down to the mean high tide line. And then the other area of dedicated public access is along the street frontage, which includes the approximately 650-square-foot building, which could contain a bike share area, public restrooms and small vending area. Summary, the proposed site plan will yield a better development than one that is strictly focused on building out to the full allowance of the zoning ordinance. The proposed site plan decreases allowable development density by 22%. The site plan decreases the allowable total building height allowed on the property. And the site plan decreases the allowable development intensity of the property. It's proposed approximately 20% less floor area than what could be achieved using the underlying zoning regulations. Site plan provides many of the design concepts that are promoted by the zoning ordinance, future land use plan and envisioned Gulf Shores plan. Small building in the front of the development will activate the street frontage along Beach Boulevard. That is something our land use plan and envisioned Gulf Shores regulations strongly promote. The development provides a dedicated beach access easement. It's worth noting that the nearest beach accesses are .37 miles to the east, which would be the State Park Pier Beach Access and .62 miles to the west, which would be the City of Gulf Shores Public Beach, Gulf Place Public Beach Access. The development also promotes a private provision of well-designed public spaces, amenities and conveniences for both residents and visitors. With that, staff recommends approval of the Phoenix Two Gulf Shores with the following conditions. Number one, an ALDOT turnout permit to be submitted and approved prior to construction. Any improvements required by the turnout permit shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Condition number two, an approved FAA Form 7460 shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. The FAA Form 7460 is required for any building that is greater than 50 feet within five miles of the airport, and this building will be, or meets those criteria. Number three, a complete traffic impact study shall be submitted for review prior to the CUP public hearing at city council. Completion of any improvements recommended by the traffic impact study and required by the city shall be the responsibility of the applicant. The improvements shall be constructed by the applicant or a fee in lieu of construction for the amount of the required improvements shall be provided by the applicant. Fees shall be paid prior to the issuance of a building permit. Condition number four, a revised site plan shall be submitted prior to CUP public hearing at city council illustrating a pedestrian walkway allowing for safe and efficient pedestrian travel from the public sidewalk along Beach Boulevard to the primary entrance of the building. Condition five, all beach mouse habitat permitting shall be submitted to the city prior to the issuance of a building permit. Condition number six, US Fish and Wildlife shall approve the project's lighting prior to the issuance of a building permit. Condition number seven, a city attorney shall review and approve the agreements for the public beach access and public use prior to the issuance of a building permit. Condition number eight, phased approval by the fire marshal with the following conditions. The fire access road shall meet the current city-approved fire and building code required by the building permit application. This includes grade, turn radius, turnaround, width, gates, et cetera. B, the parking garage shall meet the current city-approved fire and building code required by the building permit application. Specific fire department access or fire suppression problems or needs shall be addressed by the applicant. And condition number nine, city council approves the following. A deviation according to Article 10-2B of the zoning ordinance to allow a 24-foot 2-inch west side yard setback as opposed to the required 35-foot 10-inch setback. Item B, an incentive bonus for building height according to 10-5C to permit one additional story of building height. And item C, a deviation according to Article 10-2B to permit one story of building height above the incentive bonus. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dandy. Typically, if this were purely a site plan request, it would rest with the commission as far as final approval. What we're looking at here, though, is actually we'll be making a recommendation to the city council who will make the final approval because of the CUP request. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then again, the CUP is required because of the two deviations that the applicant's seeking.
Right.
So this will go before the city council at a later date and will require another public hearing at that meeting.
And the applicant is aware of that?
Yes, sir, they are.
Is there anyone up here that has a question for staff?
Andy, can you just give the approximate location of the beach overlay district? Where the overlay, how far it goes?
Sure. The beach overlay district, from the, I guess, it starts on the, on the east side of town. It starts pretty much at the State Park boundary and runs westward down to 11th Street. And it encompasses both the north side and south side of Beach Boulevard, a couple of blocks north.
So all the way to 11th Street down West Beach?
Yes, sir. And in the, in the middle of the city, around the eight blocks around intersection of Highway 59 and Beach Boulevard is the walking district, which is not included in the beach overlay district.
Anyone else?
Can you clarify, just real quick, the difference between, I know the CCL line is coastal construction line, then the rear building line, that turquoise dash line you had?
So, I can go back to the diagram, thank you. So the rear, the rear building line, that's just showing that they're proposing, the rear of their building is proposed to be set back off of the coastal construction line significantly. And the reason for that is to, in an effort to preserve the views of the condominiums to the east and west of this proposed development. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Is the applicant or his representative here and wishes to speak to this? Good afternoon, sir.
Hello, my name is Forrest Daniel. I'm the architect on the project. And Andy has done an excellent job of presenting, and so we don't have any further presentation unless there are any specific questions you would like to ask.
We thank you for your being here with us this afternoon.
Thank you.
Especially good application.
Appreciate it.
Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me open the public hearing, raise your hand, be notified, and you'll step up to a microphone here so that they can hear you out in virtual land. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Austin. I live on East Second Avenue. Last year, we had extremely difficult times getting any beach access. We're supposed to have needed access off of Fourth Street. And the condos had so many rental beach chairs and umbrellas that we couldn't even get close to the beach. Now, it looked like with their development, yes, they had the back of their building setback, but it looked like, and I could be wrong, that they had their pools out in front of that next to the beach and their hot tubs and their so forth. So they're already taking up a lot of that area between the back of their building and the coastal build line. Is that correct?
Their pools are located to the south side of the building, between the building and the coastal construction line.
So they're almost to the coastal construction line. So that takes up that beach. That beach is not usable by the public. Last year, I was told by a couple of the companies with the condo buildings, I could not set my chair out next to the beach to watch my grandchildren because they had the right to use that. But it's needed access for our development. And, you know, a lot of people come off Fourth Street and park there and walk down and use that beach. So my biggest problem with the building site is you're going to add another probably 400 people trying to use that area. you're going to add another probably 400 people trying to use that area beach. And then those of us that live down here full-time and have our homes here that we bought to be close to the beach. Last year, I was told by someone, well, just go and you get in your car and go someplace else. That's not why I bought two blocks from the beach. I didn't buy so that I could get in my car and go someplace else.
Madam, you're not the Lone Ranger. People come to this area, it's a tourist-oriented area.
I am aware of people come to this area and it's a tourist area. But I have deeded access, our development has deeded access, and when we're denied use of our deeded access, that's not right.
That I would agree with you about, you need to pursue that.
Andy, the area...
We pursued that greatly last year, all summer long. And we got not very many places with it.
Andy, the area between the condominium building and the CCL line, is that, in that private property there, and then the public beach is south of the CCL?
So the, if we could go back to, let me, the diagram here. If you see the, so you see the CCL line in blue. There's another line a little bit further to the south, or lower on the screen. That is the extent of the private property. Then there's, according to the current, or the most recent areas that we have, there is quite a bit of land south of that, which is public beach. And also, Ms. Austin is referring to, there is a private beach access at Fourth Street, which is a little, approximately 300, 400 feet to the west of this development. That beach access, the city actually has a public park in there, but the beach access goes down to the beach, and it dead-ends into a piece of property that is owned by the Romeo Skipper subdivision. So that is what I believe she's talking about. And I'm not a lawyer, but I would believe if someone was blocking the property owners of Romeo Skipper from their beach access, that's probably something they need to talk to a lawyer about because, as far as I know, that is their beach access. So, but yes, there is considerable amount of public beach south of this, the private property that this is being developed on.
And does the proposed public beach boardwalk extend all the way south to that public beach area?
The note on the plans just indicates it will extend as far as Fish and Wildlife, and ADM will allow it. But I did speak with the building official prior to this meeting, and he indicated it should be able to extend all the way down to the public beach.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Gentlemen in the rear, would you come forward, please?
Good afternoon, I'm Daniel Craven, and I represent the 53 unit owners at the Colonnades condominium. And I also happen to represent Royal Palms as well. And I'm very familiar with this area down here. And first thing I want to do is congratulate the city and Forrest Daniel and Mr. Brad and Mr. Robinson for getting together and putting together a pretty good plan to diminish the allowable capacity from going from 141 units down to 110. And it seems to be a good overall plan, and there is a beach access that addresses, somewhat addresses, some problems in the area. But I think that there could be a better way of doing this. I certainly understand the reason to compress from 36 feet on each side of the building to get it down to 24 feet, to work out the square footages so nothing has to be built above the parking deck and they can get 110 units in. But we believe that it would be better to flip the beach access from the west side of the property to the east side of the property and for a number of reasons. The first reason is that you've got a 24-story structure here, going to be going right up against Colonnades, which is a significant structure in itself, and you're going to be putting them closer together. On the other side, though, you've got our point of view, which is nothing but townhomes on pilings, which currently, right now, only has four, and at the most, can have 18. So it looks to me like it'd be better to move the building more toward the east to not have so much compression over there by Colonnades. In addition, one of the main problems, and in fact, it's a terrible problem, is the Comfort Inn, which is across the street, has a, really has done very little to try to get their customers to use the current beach access they have down at Fourth Street. We have a terrible problem of trespassers at Colonnades and our point of view and Royal Palms, and they don't seem to be doing anything to the point where we have seriously considered filing a lawsuit against them for not doing it on behalf of Royal Palms and perhaps Colonnades as well. And we just haven't been able to do anything with them. Now, a beach access would probably, would help solve that problem, but there's also the issue of beach access from Grand Caribbean, and there's another condo in the middle between Grand Caribbean and Comfort Inn. And it just seems to me that, and the owners at Colonnades agree with me, that if the beach access was going to be on the east side, it would better serve the whole area. And then it wouldn't be, I mean, I realize it's all going to be congested, but it's not quite as congested in front of our point of view. And to put all that traffic from the north side of the road coming to the beach would be better to put it on the east side rather than the west side. And the owners at Colonnade would ask you to consider making this change. They applaud you for, and Mr. Brad and Mr. Robinson and Forrest for backing, upholding the pool between the building and the CCL line to back up the building so it doesn't block the view at the Colonnades. But if we could, instead of moving the building 12 feet toward them, we feel like it would be better to put it on the other side and just reverse it. Otherwise, it's a beautiful design, and we think it will work for everybody. But seriously, we'd ask you to consider flipping the project so the beach access on the other side, which we believe would better serve the area
Thank you.
and take care of all of the trespassers that are coming across these condominiums.
You're getting repetitive.
I'm sorry.
We thank you.
I'm through. Unless anybody has a question for me.
Does anyone have a question for this gentleman?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Come forward if you would.
Hello, my name is Jason Wood. I know a few of you guys. I'm one of the owners and the main developer of the Comfort Inn that's across the street from this proposed project. And our family also did the Colonnades project for the developers of it. And we're really pleased to see this public beach access, obviously, because that's a big problem here. I live over in the 38 area, it's a huge problem there. I mean, they have literally no public beach access. So in the grand scheme of things, the City of Gulf Shores has done a really great job of having good public access and really able to walk up and down the beach without being harassed for the most part. I have on my phone a picture of a welcome to the Comfort Inn suites. It's a letter that's on every nightstand, in every guest room. It's given to guests when they check in. We have placards all over the hotel as you come in. I have an amazing staff there, and this is a really great hotel, and it allows a lot of blue collar people to come enjoy the beach that can't afford to own a condominium in one of these high-rises. So I take a little offense to Mr. Craven, you know, saying that without a lot of evidence. But I want to just read on this welcome sheet, and it gives a lot of information about Gulf Shores and where to go, what to do. But the second item on here says, "Beach access from main hotel entrance, East Beach Boulevard, walk one block west, right to the stoplight, and cross the street at the crosswalk, which would be the deeded access." So I just want to make the point that we realize this development is probably going to happen. It's given a public beach access, which is good for everybody and should help alleviate some of the issues that they're talking about. But we are doing our part, we're doing all we can do. I mean, we can't arrest people. There's really nothing we can do but encourage them to go to the deeded access. So I'm really proud of our hotel, and we have a wonderful staff, and they work really hard to try to get people to use the access. So that comment was probably, was unsubstantiated and unnecessary, really. But I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Andy, do, where's Andy? Do you know offhand if consideration was given to the spacing of the structure otherwise as has been requested?
Talking about flipping the beach access from the west to the east side. I believe there was consideration given to that, and Forrest Daniel can probably answer that.
Originally, we did actually place the beach access on the east side of the property. And after meeting with city staff and discussing various things, we moved it to the west side for a couple of reasons. One is if we put the access drive on the west side, then the access drive for Colonnade and for this project would be very close to each other, and there's a good bit of traffic that would be coming out of each of those. So ALDOT prefers those to be spaced about 250 feet apart, which they would be now. There is a driveway, to our point of view, very close to ours, but the traffic coming in and out of it is very, very light. So it was better to put that access drive on the east side. And I think that if the Colonnade people thought about it, the drive would be, they would have less noise and less, just noise pollution and other problems and traffic close to them with the drive on the east side than if it were on the west side. So I don't know that they'd notice a few more feet of the distance between the buildings, but I certainly think they would notice the noise of a car driving right up adjacent to their property as opposed to it being on the east side. So I think that the current layout works a little better for them, you know, once we discuss all the issues there. And then the other reason that the city staff prefer to shift the building to the west rather than toward the east is that typically you try to give more buffer to a lesser intense development than you do to one that's already very intense. And so that was the reasoning behind that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
My name is Jean Poole, and I'm owner at Colonnades, my wife and I. I'm on the board. Preferably, we'd rather move it to the east side. One other option that we've thought about that I thought would be equitable to both is to do 30 feet on each side of that new building. Where we're losing 12 feet now, we would only lose six in that buffer. So you would have, from the new Phoenix East to the east 30 feet and to the west 30 feet. I think that would be a more equitable solution.
No. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come forward. Good afternoon.
My name's Lorraine Owen, and I'm a permanent resident of Gulf Shores since 2002. I'm the last house on East Second Avenue on the south side. So I've been coming down since 1979. Just to clarify something that was said earlier, I worked with Grant Brown last year to resolve that issue about the vendors that had to do with the Romeo Skipper access so that the vendors could not take that over. And Grant Brown was diligent and helped with that. So having had said that, and I don't mean to sound cynical, I do understand progress, I do understand development, but I don't understand overdevelopment. And why I'm saying that is, it sounds as though the structure to go up, there is no, nothing set in place to stop that. But the offset to go to the west, there is an avenue there to say no to. So what I'm asking is two things. First of all, and I recognize this is city as opposed to state, there is a state access on the east of Royal Palms that was covered over with Ivan, we were here, and it was never reestablished, where all this traffic, Comfort Inn, and I have spoken with Mr. Wood, him and his father-in-law have been very good to me on my street, trying to accommodate, anyway. There is access there already. So at the real risk of sounding cynical and recognizing it's, and I hate to be repetitive, state and city, it seems as though part of the deal, to sweeten the deal for the city, for them to have this huge, huge thing that is going to just give so much congestion where we are, part of the sweetener is that you get another public beach access. But you already have state access there, and you've got a small one on this side. And again, I do apologize if I sound strident. But why can't we just utilize that state access? And do we really need the 2 millionth Phoenix, really? I mean, seriously, all of us in our neighborhood, and I do recognize progress, but we need, anyway, thank you.
Mark, do you have anything to offer as far as this state versus city access business you was talking about?
Other than, you know, the, again, I'm going by what's in the code of ordinances. She's right, yes. You get, if you provide a public beach access, that allows you for consideration of the CUP as requested. So that is specified in ordinance, that's exactly right. But the distance between Fourth Street, the access there that's dedicated only to that subdivision, and the Gulf State Park is probably about 1,000 feet with nothing in between. So this would put almost a public beach access in the middle of that long stretch. And at least it gives a location where people can know that they can go legally and go out to the beach at that location. So, yes, there's accesses to the east and there's accesses to the west. But I think the opportunity to provide more public access to the residents on the north side of the road is something we can overlook and pass up. I think it's desperately needed, and I think in the grand scheme of things, they legally could go one floor higher now and could go a lot higher number of units, and they're not doing either one. So there's a bonus of one level that's being asked, but they could go, from a physical standpoint, they can go up one floor more than what's shown on their plan. Does that answer the question?
It helps, yes, thank you.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Does that at Fourth Street, does that actually give access to, is that deeded access to all of that area on the north side of the road or part of that subdivision?
It's not all of the area on the north side. It was whatever that subdivision limits were at the time it was deeded. I'm not, I could not sit here and tell you what those limits are.
I think I want to make a, just make a note that it does not cover all of that area over there.
It was specific to a subdivision that was given that.
Mark, real quick, do you have, do you also have any, right here, yep, sorry, any preliminary information as far as traffic study or anything like that as far as the traffic study?
The limits of the traffic studies that we required of the applicant is everything from 59 to Fourth Street. So they're looking at the neighborhood streets as what, and there's not really a whole lot that can be done on the Beach Boulevard. And normally, on a project of this scale, you would see a right turn lane or deceleration lane put on Beach Highway because we have a 10-foot pedestrian pathway that we built in recent past, and the bike lanes, we're not allowing that, neither is the state because it would completely disconnect our pedestrian pathways that we've spent a lot of money establishing. So the likely outcome of that traffic impact study is, could be some improvements made at Second Street, and, because I know that we have a signal at First, we have a signal at Third, and a signal at Fourth, and a lot of times, the traffic will disperse throughout that neighborhood and come to the Beach Boulevard at multiple locations. So anywhere that, there could be some additional improvements made. So anywhere that, there could be some additional improvements made. That's what we'll be focusing on in this TIS that they're undergoing right now.
Sure.
Thank you, Mark.
In response to Mr. Poole's comment about maybe splitting the setback deviation there, looking at the site plan, it looks like the access is pretty tight to that boundary line as it is. I think the issue of having two access driveways from two condominiums right next to each other is a bigger detriment and a greater safety risk than having a condo closer to a condo. But having said all that, is there any opportunity for any of that footage to go back to the other side and shift that at all to help on that setback deviation? Or is it all one side or the other? And it looks pretty tight. Doesn't look like there's much room there.
I don't know that that's been discussed, but it's something we can be glad to look at and just, and talk to the applicant about.
Because on the drawing, the drive aisle looks pretty, pretty tight on the east side.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that issue. The, we could split the difference except when we enter the building on the side, the turning radius to come in is at the minimum. And in fact, you can see that the drive kind of swings into that five-foot landscape briefly to accomplish that. So if we split the difference, we would lose that turning radius that we needed to enter the building.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me close the hearing now. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'm making motion to recommend approval of the application, ZA2100001.
We go motion and a second for approval. Any other comment or question up here? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
I would like just to make a comment. I think it's a great opportunity to have a proven quality developer putting this building in our community. And the experience for our visitors, guests will be enhanced. And, you know, what we've really done here is given one height of habitable floor for public access, which we cannot, that's really the decision that was made. Everything else was by right. And we cannot seem to get enough public access and don't know what the future holds for the out parcel that will be used by the city. But with our pedestrian improvements that we've made along the highway, resting points, bicycle drop points, unloading point for the public beach access, I think there's great opportunity in that as well as the public beach access. And we're glad to have you in town, Mr. Brett, Mr. Robinson.
Jennifer, we're going to put you to work this afternoon. We have a site plan consideration.
Yes, sir.
Thomas Commercial Building.
First, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be with you commissioners. The next application we have is a site plan application. The applicant is seeking approval of a 5,760 square foot contractor's office and warehouse with existing outdoor storage to be located at 1220 Commerce Drive. And this is within the Business and Aviation Park. The site is located within the northeast quadrant of the city limits and is located on Lot 24. I indicated in your report Lot 11, and that is incorrect. It should state Lot 24. Lot 24 of the Business and Aviation Park, it is zone industrial and is within the Business and Aviation Park overlay. And this overlay places supplementary regulations to the underlying industrial zoning district regulations. Now from this aerial, you can see that the front half of the lot contains the majority of the protected trees, where the rear half of the lot has been cleared and is used for unpermitted outdoor storage of commercial equipment and other items. Existing conditions. The street view is located there in the square pictures. You can see the top is a street view of the trees along the front half of the lot. Those are the protected trees that previously shown on the aerial. And the bottom picture there is a photograph of the protected trees that are to be, that are to be saved. And they're located more to the interior of the lot. The oval pictures give you an idea of the existing outdoor storage that's located within the rear. Some of the materials in those pictures would be commercial equipment, commercial materials, vehicles, trailers, and there are some boats located in the rear of the property. So outdoor storage, I'm going to get to that first. So the owner of the property had been contacted by our zoning administrator and code enforcement regarding the unpermitted outdoor storage on the rear of this lot. In order for the storage to remain, the applicant was given the opportunity to submit a site plan application that would allow the outdoor storage to be an accessory to a permitted use. Now, specific overlay zone regulations are provided as conditions, as we'll discuss at the end of the presentation, with regards to screening of the existing outdoor storage and materials that are allowed to be stored on the lot. All right, the site plan. So our lot size is roughly one and a half acres. The size of the building is proposed to be 5,760 square feet. This building will include an office area, warehouse area, and an open storage area. The, I do want to make it clear, the area labeled on the site plan, future open storage and future storage, that those are not part of this application. So those are just there to indicate a potential expansion of this project at a later date. There is a gravel surface area located north of the open storage area, and that is to be used for the backing of construction, construction trucks and large construction equipment. The parking is located forward of the principal building. Drainage is proposed along the north property line. That's a little easier to see in the smaller rendering there, and that drainage area is in the blue color. Existing outdoor storage is to remain within the rear of the parcel. Future land use plan designates this area as commercial mixed use and contractors' commercial service uses comply with this designation. The zoning, again, industrial, building, electrical, and plumbing contractors are allowed by right within this zoning district. The Business and Aviation Park overlay zone has specific uses for specific lots. And commercial services, including landscaping, building, plumbing, and electrical contractors are allowed by, are allowed as a use on Lot 24. Now, the plan proposes, the plans proposed conform to the industrial area and dimensional requirements, off-street parking, landscaping, architectural, and drainage standards of the zoning ordinance. The proposed site design also meets the supplemental regulations of the overlay zone with regards to the placement of the parking lot, architecture, lighting, fences, and signage. But the outdoor storage remains a condition of approval based on the items currently stored on the property and the condition of the existing screening. Our fire marshal has provided a phased approval. Engineering department had no outstanding review comments or conditions. And the airport authority has approved the specific design elements per the overlay So we have the proposed elevations for the structure. The street frontage does not propose any metal facades, strictly stucco and brick exterior materials. The sides and rear elevations propose stucco, brick, and metal facade materials. The proposed elevations meet the industrial architectural regulations. And the overlay zone has a couple of supplemental requirements based on the screening of the bay doors and the loading docks. And the applicant is screening those areas by the eight-foot-tall wooden louver fence. And the overlay zone also encourages earth tones. And the applicant has stated that the stucco and the metal will be gray and the brick is proposed to be red. So the overlay zone is very specific in where it wants you to place your parking. The parking is required to be forward of the principal building. And as you can see, that is where the applicant has placed the parking. 10 minimum parking spaces are required and 11 spaces are being provided. Parking lot lighting is proposed to be full cut-off fixtures and installed at 14 feet in height. And those are the two blue dots that you see there on the lighting plan. And the plan, the lighting plan, has been approved by the airport authority as required by the overlay zone regulations. Landscape being. So the tree survey that was provided included 32 protected trees. 26 of those protected trees are proposed to be removed and six are proposed to remain. Those six are what was shown in the picture in the previous slides that showed the six trees to be in the interior of the lot that are supposed to be protected. Staff did provide some alternative design ideas to save more trees. We flip in the location of the building in the gravel surface area and then potentially move in the building more to the north to save some existing trees along the south property line were proposed. But the applicant is maintained that it's necessary to keep this design based on the need for future phases, which is why that future phase was shown on that site plan so that you could see what the owner is thinking about for a potential future phase. And then they need adequate turnaround space for construction vehicles. And that was allowed in that gravel area. Now, the landscape design does conform to the zoning ordinance regulations for street frontage, perimeter, foundation plantings as required by the zoning ordinance. Now, the overlay zone is specific to where you can put fences. It does prohibit fences forward of the front facade of the building. And the plan, oop, I guess I need to show you the plan. There we go. The red lines on the plan will show you where the fences are located. They're pretty much just an extension of the front facade of the building. The applicant proposes eight-foot louvered wooden fences, which is shown in the picture there on your screen. And the airport authority has approved the location and design of the fence. The overlay zone requires a master signage plan. And the freestanding signage proposed is 21 square feet and three and a half feet tall. The overlay zone has restrictions to monument signs with a maximum of 32 square feet and six feet in height. So this monument sign proposed does meet those regulations. And there is an attached sign proposed on the front facade of the building, which will be visible from Commerce Drive. The property is located on Commerce Drive and is currently not designated, Commerce Drive was not currently designated as a roadway to receive bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure per the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Although the property does not abut an existing, an existing or planned bicycle or pedestrian facility, the applicant is still required to pay a fee in lieu for a six-foot sidewalk. That fee was given to us, the cost estimate, and was accepted by the engineering department. The applicant is proposing two rollout containers behind the fence, so those will be screened. And in the future, if a dumpster is required, preapproval of that dumpster location will need to come to us first before the dumpster is delivered on site. Okay, staff recommends approval of the site plan for Thomas Commercial Building with the following conditions. Tree protection fencing shall be installed prior to the issuance of any city permits for land disturbance or construction. Items currently on the property that are not related to the contractor's commercial service use shall be removed from the property. Personal storage is prohibited within, is a prohibited use within the Business and Aviation Park overlay zone. The outdoor storage area shall be screened from public view, which includes developed and undeveloped parcels abutting the subject property with an opaque fence or wall of permanent construction. If the fence design is different from the wooden louvered fence proposed with the site plan submittal, a detail of the new fence shall be submitted for review and approval. And of course, that approval would also have to go to the airport authority. Sidewalk fee of $5,575 shall be paid prior to the issuance of a building permit. If at any time the applicant desires a dumpster for trash disposal, the location of the dumpster will need to be preapproved prior to delivery of the dumpster unit. And number seven, provide height of louvered wooden fence on the overall site and utility plan. And I have an additional condition to add. Number eight, it's there in yellow, provide a label for the exterior material under roof on the north elevation. The maximum percentage of metal is 70% for building elevations not adjacent to the public thoroughfare. I noted that today when I was doing my review to get prepared for you guys and I noticed it didn't have a label on what that facade material was supposed to be. So I wanted to just make sure we get that clarified and correct. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
This business of losing perhaps as many as 26 trees, is that necessary to accomplish what is being planned here? This isn't a matter of taking down trees simply because they'll have equipment there to do so at the time?
Right.
Or for the future expansion, which may or may not happen, of course. We've seen this before.
True. So that future expansion, if that does happen, of course, will come to you first. And we would be able to discuss at that time the saving of the six trees that they are currently saving in this plan. I can understand some of the trees needing to be removed because of the required location of the parking lot. The overlay zone requires the parking lot to be forward of the principal building. Now, working with the building placement, working with the applicant, he did provide us with plans that showed the AutoCAD backing of a truck with a boat trailer, which would be consistent with a truck and a construction trailer. And then also showed us a, an AutoCAD drawing of an RV, which would be consistent with the size of the construction equipment that the owner uses. And it took every bit of that gravel area for that backing maneuvers to take place so that they could get out on the Commerce Drive. I mean, it's tough. And it's tight based on, on the evidence that the applicant provided. I mean, I hate to see him go, but it's going to be, it's going to be tough. Because where the trees are located is where your parking and your structure is.
Okay.
And a few, a few trees, there are four trees on the north property line. There are four there that, within that drainage area, that they're going to be cutting in a new drainage ditch. But it's going to be tough. And for him to keep that outdoor storage that he already has in the rear, it's kind of hard to move every, all the pieces around.
Now, your department seems to have some concern about stuff that's been stored outside before.
Yes, sir.
Does the applicant understand clearly that after he does what he does, that's not going to be allowed?
I would say he understands clearly. He's, he's been contacted by the coded, coded, code enforcement officer and our zoning administrator. And now he has a nice handy-dandy report that states everything in writing. So I think he clearly understands.
He understands the city's remedy.
Yes.
If it were. One other thing, Jennifer, and that is in the staff report, mention is made in the category of sidewalk. It's one paragraph there about sidewalk. About three-quarters of the way down, it indicates constructing a six-foot sidewalk along the property. of the way down, it indicates constructing a six-foot sidewalk along the properties right away. On the plans, it's indicated as being a five-foot sidewalk.
Okay, so that will, I will get the applicant to remove that construction detail, because they are not going to construct a sidewalk. They're going to pay the fee in lieu of a six-foot sidewalk. So I could see where that could be confusing. I will just ask the applicant to remove that construction detail. I have a question.
They need to use wheel steps if necessary also.
Yes, I think those are shown on the plan so that they don't overhang that sidewalk. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer, I was just wondering why we do the parking in the front. I'm just curious. In this overlay district or just in general?
I think that's a good question. Some of that had to do with security. I do know there are specific, that's why the fences are where they are, and it's, are required to be, can't be forward of the building line. Some of it had to do with security, but honestly, I'm not really sure why that parking is required to be in the front. Just a specific supplemental regulation of that, of that overlay zone. Mark, do you know why they would have required that? Right.
Yeah, I think it goes back to the industrial nature of this park when it was first developed, probably 15, 20 years ago. Because reading the ordinance, it says parking in front of the building, and everything behind the building facade is going to be fenced in. So I think it's going back to the original, really more industrial use of the property. As now we're seeing it more as a business and aviation park, not so much industrial, but that's probably where it came from.
I think you're right, Andy.
As well as the fencing for security and for screening of all the industrial uses that were going to be located behind the building.
Right. Anybody else have a question up here for staff? Is the applicant or his representative here and wishes to address this board? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Lee with Lee Engineering Company, and I'm here with the owner, if you have any specific questions for him as well. She did a very good presentation. I believe that she's pretty much said everything I could possibly say. And if you had any specific questions for me and/or the owner, feel free to ask, and I'll be, I'll answer them the best I can.
Anybody have a question for this gentleman?
Is there a plan for Phase Two? Do we know what that is or what the timing of the second phase might be?
We have, the owner and I have discussed future plans, which was shown on that presentation to extend the building to the east. I personally don't know when the timing might be. He might be able to answer that question, but I do not.
Would that be the warehouse extension?
That is correct. There'd be more indoor storage and more outdoor storage under roof extended to the east.
So as far as the tree ordinance is concerned, I totally understand the trees that need to come down for drainage and the driveways and the building and access management there. But are there significant trees in the Phase Two area that could be preserved today and taken down when that phase is built?
There are six trees, I believe, that are still, that could remain today, but they would be in the way in future development. The current plan is to save those trees. I will, I saw a picture of the trees, and I saw them myself. It looks like beetles have gotten into the pine trees. So I don't know how long they're going to last, because beetles are there. But currently, the plan is to keep those six trees.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. I wouldn't have asked that question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anything else? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this issue as far as a public hearing being required? No one? Thank you all for coming. Mel, show that there was no response, please. I think someone can offer a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application, ZA 20000077, with staff conditions adding Jennifer's number eight regarding the, I forgot what that was. I remember the eight.
Labeling the exterior.
Yeah, labeling the exterior of the facade.
There's a motion and a second for approval as submitted. Any other comment or question from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Here's unanimous, Mel. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this board? Did not get an opportunity to get on our formal agenda going once? Thank you. Other business. Do we have anything else coming forward on the business side? I have a couple of items when we get to the end here. Communications and staff and the commission. Don't take my thunder now and talk about multimodal. Go ahead. I'd rather hear it out of you.
You were at the beginning.
No, I was just going to give the title.
Okay, you're good. I mean, I want to hear your thunder.
I'd much rather hear your explanation. It'll make much more sense.
I'll move to the air. It's still be done.
Because all I've got is the newspaper article to go on, whereas you were involved. All it is, is I trust at least some of you know about a meeting that is scheduled for Thursday of this week, 4:00 to 6:00, which, as the article I'm referring to reads, this is a public involvement meeting. Well, there's so few folks here now, but as far as the audience. Public involvement meeting, Waterway Village Multimodal Access Project, Thursday, February 25th, at the Civic Center, which is here, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I understand that although it starts at 4:00, there'll be a presentation made around 4:30. And afterward, then there'll be time for any of those who are interested to get questions answered by representatives that will be here. This is a city-hosted item.
I think it should be added that it's going to also be on Facebook or Facebook Live?
Yes, just as we're streaming right now. We'll stream that presentation as well. And there's also forums on our website now that you can go in if you have any questions in advance, or you have questions that you want to submit after you view the presentation online, then you can email those questions, and those be forwarded to the engineer of record. The city received, back in November of 2019, we received a build grant that included multimodal improvements to multiple locations in the city. As a condition of that build grant, we have to have public involvement meetings, which we want to. This is, these are fantastic projects. We're excited about. I think the, what I'll see, the crowning jewel of this presentation will be a pedestrian bridge over the ICW in approximate location of where the old Swing Bridge was at many years ago. That will allow us to utilize the additional space on the ICW bridge for an additional southbound lane to Highway 59 to deal with traffic. That project will start at Coastal Gateway Boulevard and go all the way to Fort Morgan Road, so we'll be at an additional southbound lane to Highway 59. There's also improvements in and around the Medical Village area. That will be discussed, as well as some improvements to County Route 6 West between 59 and Sportsplex.
I like your thunder better. Anything else from staff or anything at all? Andy, I know you're pinch hitting, but do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody up here have something? And I guess somebody can offer a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adios. Thank you all for coming.